Wait, do thumbs up, tell her we're good.
Do you see that screen?
Right?
No, you don't see that, right?
I, I do.
Oh.
Hi Claire, I can hear, we can hear you.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Yay!
We can hear you.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so with that, I will, I'll knock on the table. Bring to order the City of Buellton's Planning Commission for Thursday, June 18th. And for our audience, this is our first official Zoom, uh, meeting for the Planning Commission. And will Commissioner Heady lead us in the pledge, please?
Uh, please stand.
Hurry, hurry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which it stands, one nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, that was perfect.
Awesome. Thank you for the flag.
Share, get out of here.
Um, so Claire, can you do roll call for us?
Certainly, I would love to.
Awesome.
Commissioner Blockdike.
Here.
Commissioner Heady.
Here.
Commissioner Liggett.
Here.
Vice Chair Sarkia.
Here.
Chair Hamel.
Here. Okay, um, so reordering of agenda, is there any reason to reorder anything? Doesn't look like it. Presentations none. Approval of the minutes from the regular Planning Commission meeting of May 21st. Can I make a motion?
Madam Chair, I would just like to note a correction to the minutes. The adjournment time was 7:32, not 7:04 as noted on the packet minutes.
Okay, thank you, noted.
I will like to make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Would you like a roll call vote?
Yeah, sure, I guess, or do we?
Commissioner Heady? Commissioner Heady?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sarkia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blockdike?
Aye.
Commissioner Liggett?
Aye.
Chair Hamel?
Aye. Okay, consent calendar, none. Continued public hearings, none. Other business, oh wait, new public hearings, none. Okay, so these are business items, not public hearings tonight. Number two. Preliminary review, Smart Link AT&amp;T Wireless Communications Facility 20-CUP-01. I'll turn the table over to Cara.
Okay. I'm gonna share my screen here, I have a PowerPoint. Give me one second. Oh. Host disabled participants' screen sharing. Claire, if you can turn on the screen sharing option?
It is, it is on, one participant can share at a time.
Okay. It's not, uh, it's not letting me.
It's not working, Rose. Have Andrea try something?
Just one moment, let me pull it up.
No, I'm City of Buellton, Cara's Cara, Andrea's Andrea.
Just one second here.
This worked when we tried it out the other day. We have this down.
It just worked for me when I shared the flag.
Okay, one second, I think, let's see, let me try. Okay. Oh, it says host disabled attendee's screen sharing.
So where is that at?
On your screen sharing option.
I have it. Yeah, it's checked.
Oh, okay. I've got it up now.
Okay, good.
Okay. Ooh. So it's gonna work. Can everybody see the shared screen?
Yeah, very nice.
Okay, so before you is a wireless communications facility proposed by Smart Link AT&amp;T. Uh, for expanded AT&amp;T coverage, proposed on city-owned property. The water reservoir site off of Hanada Park Road. And here with us tonight is Tyler Kent and Dino Romeo, the agents on behalf of AT&amp;T. So as you can see on the vicinity maps, the project is located within the southeast portion of the city's reservoir site. It's zoned public, quasi-public, and it's on the hill above Paz Park and the Central Avenue multifamily residential zone. So the project is proposing to lease 960 square feet for the 4G facility. The four panel antennas within three sectors will be disguised within a faux eucalyptus tree, and the branches span 22 feet across in diameter. You can see at the top. Here. Below the tree is a six by six foot steel equipment cabinet, providing an enclosure for the main electric panels with power from PG&E. An HVAC system and a communications bay with a small GPS antenna attached on the outside of the cabinet. And then supporting utility cabinets are on the west of the lease site. And a 20 watt diesel backup generator is located on the southernmost portion of the site. And this backup generator is gonna be on a concrete pad, and it will be required to have curbs around the edges of the concrete to catch any potential diesel leakage. They're proposing that the entire site be surrounded by a six-foot chain link fence. The city's parcel already has an existing six-foot chain link fence around the property, and the lease area will just connect to it with, on the north end, the west ends of the lease area for additional security. As far as environmental review, this will likely be processed as a Class III categorical exemption for small facilities and structures. Lastly, the Federal Telecommunications Act restricts the city's abilities to regulate wireless communications facilities based on RF radio frequency emissions, so long as the project complies with FCC regulations. The applicant has stated that AT&amp;T cell sites operate well below with, well below these standards, and the typical urban cell site operates hundreds or even thousands of times below the FCC's limits for safe exposure. And also, AT&amp;T is subject to the requirements of the California Public Utilities Commission. This next slide, you see the propagation maps, and it's showing where there's sufficient outdoor signal in purple or pink, where there's sufficient in-vehicle signal shown in yellow, and then this sufficient indoor signal is shown in green. So if the carrier sufficiently demonstrates that there is a significant gap in coverage, and the project is the least intrusive alternative to remedy that gap, the proposal must be approved per the Federal Telecommunications Act. So AT&amp;T's radio frequency engineers have identified a significant gap for a majority of Buellton for in-vehicle and indoor signal, as you can see in the first propagation map under the before project. So with the proposed facility in after project, you can see that there's gonna be substantial indoor coverage for a majority of the city. So due to the city's height limits, the reservoir site with its high elevation and availability lease was found by Smart Link and AT&amp;T to be the only real suitable site to cover this significant gap in coverage. The parcel itself is considered an interior lot, which means it's accessed or accessed by a private easement and has no street frontage. The setbacks for interior lots actually override public quasi-public zone setback. And so the interior lot setbacks specify that any structure shall have at least 10 feet setback from the property lines. And so in this site plan, the south and east setbacks are inconsistent with the standard. The south property line is shown three feet from the property line to the generator, and the east is shown seven feet from the property line of the generator, so those will need to be at least 10 feet. And you can see on the left there, on the site plan, the sole access road to the site is privately owned, it's a road off of Hanada Park Road, and the applicant will be required to obtain an access easement for this road as part of the conditions of approval. And the site will be accessed by AT&amp;T for routine maintenance about one to two times per month. The backup generator also will run once a month on one of these routine visits, and it's the only aspect of the project that will really make any noise. Okay, you can see on the elevations here, that the height of the project is at 35 feet, and that's actually the height of the support structure, so the faux tree trunk. And that's the maximum height for the public quasi-public zone. The antenna and similar architectural features are exempt from height limits for up to 55, 50 feet. That's part of our municipal code, so this includes the faux branches, which are 40 feet. The actual branches of the faux tree are gonna start around 15 feet high. We looked at alternative screening to the chain link fence for greater adherence to our community design guidelines, but screening such as a solid masonry wall or landscaping weren't found to be real practical. In this case, a solid masonry wall would look really out of place if they had to take away some of the chain link fence and replace it with a masonry wall. And then additional landscaping, we found to be not practical. We would, the city would have to maintain any landscaping on the site and the lease area. Irrigation would have to be installed, and it would also warrant additional maintenance personnel to the site. Right. Uh, the applicant has provided photo simulations. And for multiple, four different views in the city. The first view here is looking northwest from Paz Park. Second view here is looking northwest from Avenue of the Flags. Third view here is the, from the water reservoir site itself, looking southwest. And the last view is also on the reservoir site, looking southeast. So these are the proposed colors and material. The faux eucalyptus tree, and then an example of the installation. And to the left are various existing installations, showing some alternative designs to the faux eucalyptus. Potential alternatives include a water tank, a broadleaf tree, a pine tree, and then other designs potentially, but are, they're limited. The staff's initial comments will be included in the letter of incompleteness to the applicant. First is a formal lease agreement between the city and applicant must be prepared to the satisfaction of the Public Works Director and City Manager and approved by City Council. This is prior to scheduling the project for public hearing with the Planning Commission. And co-location capability will be required as part of the lease agreement, so that the support structure may be able to house future antennas for other wireless carriers, and that potentially will minimize the need to construct other sites. Along with the lease agreement, the written request to waive the story pole requirements must go to City Council before we consider their application to be complete. The applicant has provided the photo simulations and has stated that story poles would not provide further clarification for review of the project. The revisions, as I mentioned before, also need to show that the setbacks are at least 10 feet from the property lines. And the plans must be fully dimensioned and include the distances from all the proposed structures and existing structures to the property lines, and this is really important for electronic submittals such as this one. So then, next, based on recommendation from our architectural consultant, we will request the applicant provide alternative faux tree types that may be more compatible with the area. And then next, the plans will have to show all existing and proposed easement, and will require an access easement on that private road. Second to last, the plans must be revised to show the concrete pad under the backup generator with a curb to retain any potential diesel spillage, and that's recommended or required by Public Works. And generator specifications will also be required. Lastly, ASOIL's report is required by County Building and Safety. So at this time, I'm open for any questions, along with the applicant, Dino Romeo and Tyler Kent, there's authorized Smart Link agents for AT&amp;T.
Okay, I have a question. I would really love to see a picture of the, of the other broadleaf tree that is, that's a possibility. I'm really glad, I mean, at a distance, I don't know that you're gonna be able to tell anything about the tree or the faux tree, or whatever you wanna call it, anyway, because it's quite a distance from anything. It's just gonna be a big blob up there. But if we, if there was a faux tree and it was broadleaf that was a little wider, it would look nicer, I think. But thank God you're not picking out a pine tree or a palm tree or the water tower. So the eucalyptus, eucalyptus tree would work if nothing else. That's all.
Bobby, have you gone to, I think it's called Cell Tree, the website?
No, I haven't gone there.
Uh, yeah, they have, down there, they have numerous photos of what they can do.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's, it's a website that they're using.
Well, my, my, my criticism was not, I was just wanted to see if there was another better tree, but if not, the eucalyptus tree would work, it's so far away, it's not gonna make that big a difference there.
Yeah, the applicant has told us that the designs that they really could do feasibly would be a broadleaf, a water tank, or a pine tree, or the eucalyptus. And then other designs are pretty limited, but...
Okay.
Can we actually, can we actually access the site from ourselves, from the Hanada Park Road? Or is it chained off?
It's, it's locked, it has a gate and a lock. It's really a privately owned road that the city just uses for access to our reservoir site. It's pretty secure.
Okay.
Any other questions, Commissioner Heady?
Not here.
Okay, Commissioner Liggett, any questions? You have, you're, you're muted for a second, you have to, there you go.
No questions.
Okay, I can read your lips. Commissioner, Vice Chair Sarkia, any additional questions?
No.
Okay. Should, should we bring the applicants in for any additional, do they have any additional comments?
I'm here, my name is Dino, I'm working on behalf of AT&amp;T, I have no problem answering other questions if you guys have. Cara and I have been in constant communication, and my colleague Tyler, who's also on the call, has been in communication with Rose and the Water District, I think Mr. Grauer, working on information regarding the generator and access, and I've been responsible for conversations. And I've been responsible for conversations with Kara about zoning and planning and, and design. So I'm happy to answer anything else. But Kara covered ninety-nine percent of everything that I would have said, so.
Okay, great. So if there are no other comments, we do not vote on this. But I guess I would say in summary that we'll move this forward on a conceptual basis and have all of the conditions that um Kara just went through on her, I think it was the last slide.
One more question real quick, sorry.
Okay.
So the recommendation per the PowerPoint will be a, a different type of tree, correct?
I believe so.
Okay, and it, it sounds like based on the conversation that you got, that the broadleaf would be the other realistic option out of the ones that we, that we presented?
It's the way I see it.
Okay, so I can, I can actually uh generate photo simulations with the broadleaf and, and maybe after seeing that, uh, you might have a better idea of how that would look as opposed to what we're currently proposing.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that concludes uh item number two.
All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kara, and thank you, applicants. Okay, um, so we will move on to other business item number three. Avenue of Flags, Median Three Concept Designs, Cal Poly Landscape Architect Design Studio. And I believe Irma will lead us in this.
Yes, and thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Um, during the past, well, introducing the uh, the project that we're looking at, um, these are um concept designs that were prepared for Median Three on the Avenue of Flags. Um, the designs are prepared um by Cal Poly Landscape Architecture Design Studio students, um, their second year student. During the past few months, planning staff has been working with the um Architecture Department, Landscape Architecture Department of Cal Poly um regarding this project. The scope of it was for students to create conceptual designs for a civic themed median that included a town plaza, amphitheater, park, and community amenities on Median Three using the Avenue of Flags specific plan as a framework. So the work effort involved students from two separate design studio classes during the spring quarter of twenty twenty. Site visits were initially scheduled for early April, however, during the, dur- um, as a result of the COVID situation, uh, all classes at Cal Poly um were taking place online. So this changed up the process a little bit. But the two professors conducted virtual tours of the median and the surrounding area. Now, some of the students independently visited the project site as, and the surrounding area and did research on the city. Um, we provided them all the resources, the planning documents that we have. So uh myself and Kara um participated in a kickoff class presentation regarding the design and programming objectives for this median. And we continue to participate in um weekly project team meetings, just like we do with a normal project team on a, on a regular bona fide project that we're doing of, of this nature with the city. Um, so it was a really rewarding experience for both Kara and I to be a part of the class. And we continued to um, not on every class, but when it was appropriate for us to be in attendance and we, we watched the conceptual designs being presented and the, the thought process that the students went through, the creative design process. It was really, really very, very interesting to watch and, and yeah, we appreciated being a part of it. So in early June, uh thirty-five students each presented their final design concept on the day of final exams. The presentations were in the form of YouTube videos and an accompanying design board. A, a number of city staff uh reviewed all of the uh YouTube videos and we ranked the videos and we voted on them actually, very democratic process. The um top five concept designs uh along with several additional designs that had elements of merit are included in this agenda item to the, for the Planning Commission's review and comment. So we've listed um the top five concept designs in the gen- uh staff report uh along with the URLs to the YouTube videos. And these videos, these top five will actually be watched during the um Planning Commission meeting is at the end of my presentation. Um, and you know, there's elements that the uh, other videos that the planning commissioners would like to uh report on or comment on as well. That's, you know, we welcome those comments. So the staff recommendation on, this is just to provide comments on the, on the designs that um you have before you and that you've watched. And the concept designs along with commission comments and other comments that we've received from the community. And we have received um, I believe like one comment from the community as well as some comments from the Chamber of Commerce. These will all uh go forward um for a similar process with the City Council at a future meeting, which is tentatively scheduled for July ninth. Um, before we start watching the videos, um I would just like to let you know that the two professors, David Watts and Senior Torres are in the audience with us in case the commission would like to um ask any questions um or invite them to make some comments. And finally, I just would like to add that the um students were also provided links to the um Planning Commission meeting tonight as well as the agenda and we encourage them to um at least tune in and view. And hopefully some of them have had a opportunity, or do have an opportunity to do that. So Kara and I are available for any questions that the commission may have of us before we show the videos. And um with that, I'll turn it back to um Madam Chair.
I was, oh, go ahead.
Uh, just again, uh, could you give everybody a little background on Median Three? And sort of the direction that it's been shaping up over the years?
Absolutely. So um.
And actually, whi- which one is Median Three?
Okay.
Very good question. So um when we um prepared the specific plan, we numbered the medians that are in the middle of the Avenue of Flags um from beginning in the north uh from one through six. So the third median is actually the median that's um just north of Second Street. So it's right at the intersection of Second Street and Avenue of Flags. Um, it's the one between the landscape median right now, that, that, that we have the nicely landscaped one and the one further to the north that's being torn up for the um parking lot. So it's, it's the large green median um in front of Tonios.
And perhaps I, cause I remember that were quite a few amenities that both the Planning Commission and the, the City Council had expressed that they wanted to see in that median uh from all the design books and to refresh at least me about what, what was sort of the, what were their guidelines?
Okay, um, yeah, we had provided a, we provided all the information to the students um as well. So they had, you know, access to the um to the specific plan and all the other planning documents going into, sorry, I just wanted to flip to the page on um. Um, here we can go on here. So um for the, so this is District Three, the Civic Junction and Town Plaza median, as it was called in the specific plan, it's um one of the, one of the medians in the downtown core. Um, the amenities that were listed in the uh specific plan as desirable were Downtown Park, Town Plaza, Amphitheater, public restrooms, shade structures, um, and other, other amenities, parking alongside the median, um, and lighting for evening events, um landscaping, and optional uh uh structures included a visitor center and the, and a historic museum. I think the most in, the top, the, the, the top priority items were really to have the public restrooms and amphitheater and a town plaza and a downtown park, as I recall, um from discussions with uh Planning Commission and the City Council.
Yeah. Is that enough, Dan?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I, I think I'm gonna, uh, if this isn't too much um, too difficult, Irma, um, I'm gonna change my thought process a little bit. I'm thinking that, can we uh watch each video separately? I mean, so I'm kinda thinking, we watch one video, we all discuss it, ask questions, make our comments. Then we watch video two and go through that one and three. Is that okay?
That makes perfect sense, yeah.
Okay, let's uh, let's begin with video number one then, for presentation number one.
I'm gonna go ahead and uh share my screen here, so just bear with me for just one moment.
Hi, my name is Senior, AT&amp;T Architecture Student, and I'm gonna.
Um, I'm just checking here. Can everybody see and hear the video?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Yes. Buellton does not have that much going on. It's a small town and the median was blank, an empty which meant endless possibilities for design. My main goal for the project was to introduce a new landmark ID to Buellton by designing in an art deco style and by having a unique landmark feature. Unlike that main objective where I was to focus on art deco, I focused on a life that occurred during that art deco era, which was jazz and swing. This is my median design. The first eye-catching features are the neon colors, which are actually paving colors that spill out onto the street. It accomplishes three things. One, it is an eye catcher for tourists traveling by vehicle. Most people who visit the Avenue of Flags don't actually stop in the avenue or in Buellton at all. The colored paving is an attraction for those people who are just passing by. Two, it forces drivers to slow down. Because the pattern is not parallel with the roadside, it forces drivers to slow down to make sure that they know where they are going. And three, in conjunction with the following that it accomplishes, it creates an attraction for people to actually stop and visit the site. The paving has leading lines towards all the main entrances to the site and invites people who are driving to actually stop and visit the median. Revisiting my goals, one standalone landmark was not enough to make tourists remember Buellton. So I made the whole site a landmark. The site itself is full with colors and these lights and water features. There are these mounds that are strategically placed as to allow drivers to only catch a glimpse of the life that occurs within the median. There is a story of jazz that unfolds here. The seat walls are rests, symbolically on a music staff and literal as well. The light features represent dancing and swinging and the mounds are improvisational features that interrupt the common rhythm and access of the site. There's so much more to learn about my project that I cannot tell you about in two minutes. So if you're interested to learn more about my ideas, please contact me at the information provided below. Thank you so much for taking the time to learn about my project.
Okay, so um commissioners, I think what we'll do, we'll just um go through this one at a time. And so since I'm talking, I'll kick off the first one and then we'll go through everybody. They can add their comments or ask questions again. I also want to briefly, and I will do this again later, but thank you so much to the Cal Poly professors that, that got us into this program. And thi- this is just super awesome, all these thirty-five uh videos of, of all the design plans. Uh, but anyway, so here's my comments on the first one, um Swing Up the Avenue. Um, first of all, stunning, the colors, I mean, I just love, yeah, uh, everyone knows on the Planning Commission that I am going to talk about art deco. And so here I just, I love the bright colors of the design, the bright colors. I love that it's, that he really, the, the um presenter really put thought into what is art deco? What was the era? What was the design? What was the music? Uh, I love that he incorporated, you know, that was the era of swing and jazz. And then obviously the big bright treble clef on the, on the median. Um, that's really awesome. I like how the pro- the project flows through. Um, I like the little grassy knolls everywhere. That's, I guess, kind of the amphitheater thing we're looking for. Um, really like the piano keyboard and all the crosswalks and at various parts of the plan. Um, those are all my, wow, that's really stunning. Um, on the other side, I'm not sure that this is super functional. And some of our elements are not in there, like the, you know, there's no real visitor center or, you know, kiosk or bathrooms and some of the main, the main um buildings that we were looking for. Um, another thing I'm kinda concerned, even though I really love the colors and how they flow out into the streets, I um think uh some of our local friends, they're already confused. And I get the comments every time I'm out uh in the community. It's like, what's with those green bike path lanes and how are we supposed to drive around those and get around? And so like if we spill out blue and purple and yellow colors, I'm like, wow, that's really gonna confuse a couple people. Um, and then just, you know, like that little landmark, the RV thing, that's probably not big enough. Um, would like to see more true flex space, you know, like multipurpose stuff, you know, and, and, and that kind of thing. So those are my comments on it. But I mean, overall, it really is a stunning design. Um, uh, who wants to go next? Commissioner Heady, do you wanna talk about it?
Uh, sure. Um, I mean, it's colorful. Like he says in the beginning, there's not much going on in Buellton. Uh, my fear would be, uh, and I share it with you, I think it's a little old. Uh, especially for two things. One, you, you'd almost have to carry it on in the next uh, uh, next center, you know, center. And if none of the buildings have been built yet and we start on that thing, it's gonna be completely out of place. None of their echo buildings, because they're all on hold. It seems like they're all the ones on second, in the Avenue of Flags both sides. Um, those north and south, like I guess, are on hold. So I think out of context, and I agree with you, that needed more definition as to what spaces were. I didn't see a lot of the things that Irma said we wanted to see in the city. So it's, it's, it's old, like you say, but it's, it's not for me.
Okay, um, Vice Chair Sarkia, any additional comments?
Oh, I thought it was striking as well. Um, there wasn't enough detail uh for me uh in the presentation. Uh, you know, what, what kind of trees are they gonna use, uh, kind of bushes? Um, um, and it's, was more of a spaceport than a um uh anything else. But uh, uh, it was nice to see something uh different like that. But again, uh, I agree with Dan. It's not for me either.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Blockdike, you wanna go next?
Um, okay, well, I, I actually agree with, with all y'all. So uh, the biggest problem here is that to get the full impact of this design, you'd have to be in a helicopter or a plane or a drone or something, you know? And uh, and that's to me the biggest, the biggest issue. But I like some of the concepts, you know, about, you know, using the color, pulling it into the street and then having it slow down. But then, like you mentioned, what do we do with those bike lanes, you know? That's gonna detract from all this. So I, I don't see this as a workable design. So.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Commissioner Leggett?
Hi, uh, I think we have something going on here in Buellton. Not the best way to start a presentation, it's just. I think it's a, a great concept. I think he really had fun with it, it looked like, you know, making something colorful, iconic. It will attract people. However, it does seem out of context, which is part of his design concept, I think. Take this idea of color really statements and make it more reflective, gonna give Buellton in some form. Might, might be an effective approach to take this further. I like the fact that he thought about traffic calming strategies by adding. I like the fact that he thought about traffic calming strategies by adding color. However, the form of that color, you know, might cause more problems. Having curved lines in the middle of straight lanes might get people to veer off-road, maybe? But that's a detail. One thing that's striking is the lack of shade. It gets hot here in the summer, I see very little, no shade, in fact. So having trees in there could be very nice and pleasant, so it could be used, used year round. And according to the plan view, looks like a lot of concrete to also go along with comfort in the summer. Concrete radiating heat without shade is just, it's not gonna attract visitors. But making it interactive with the ground lights and water, dancing water, I think is a really good strategy that could be implemented in other forms. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Irma, do you want to go to, all right, well, I get, does anyone have any questions or anything for Irma or the professors, I guess, on that?
Professor has his hand up.
No, I see head shaking. Okay.
Question.
I, I just want to offer up that with, where the students are in second year here, that what we're really looking, they, they haven't had the classes yet for being able to develop the planting design thoroughly, and so they were asked to mass the plant material and communicate like it's tall, medium, or short, looking at the height, for how that plant material would create space, and then the tree canopy. So just, just so you know, that, that they're not quite prepared to be able to give you specific plant names and stuff.
Yeah. Okay. And again, for the professors I mentioned earlier, off the record, I just really think that all of the presentations were really awesome for second-year students and all of the thought that went into, and, and some of the presentations were really professional and really well done, so I need to throw that in there again, too. We're ready for number two.
Professor Torres has his hands up and would like-
Okay, see, I can't, I don't have everybody on my screen.
His microphone is muted.
If you could unmute.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you, Manager. I, I, something that probably might be, I want to, to point out is that in the video, the, the videos have relatively low resolution, they are recorded at seventy-two DPI because it's for a video format. If, I, I'm not sure if you have access to the final boards, it has more detail, and I'm looking at his plan view in, in the final board, and it has an annotated plan. So some of the spaces and some of the concerns about the spatial definition and even the detail might be a little bit better perceived in the final boards if, if there's access to that, probably might be a good idea to revise them, just to, to be a little bit more specific in, in details.
And I think, Irma, that's what we have in the attachments in the posters, correct?
Yeah, for the top five, we've provided the boards, the-
Yeah.
Okay. And we can certainly provide all of the boards to you as well, if that is the commissioner's desire.
We'll, we'll see where it goes tonight.
Okay, so are we ready for the next one?
We're ready for the next one.
There you go.
My name is Tanya Moss, I'm a transfer landscape architecture student at Cal Poly, and this is my vision for the Avenue of Flags median three. Located in Buellton, California, the Avenue of Flags median three project is a part of a multi-step project for all five medians. The vision for this project is to provide a high-quality public gathering space that preserves the history and captures the character of the community. Inspired by the historic value of the Avenue of Flags and the prominence of the wind on the site, the patriotic wave design is a conceptual representation of a flag waving in the wind. It is evident in the movement of the curvilinear pathways, organic forms, and the meandering bio-swell. To reinforce the concept and to create a vertical geometric frame that speaks to our deco style, I incorporated rows of flags on the perimeter of the site, while the historic flag remains the focal point. The site amenities are a restroom and a visitor's center that also serves as a snack and coffee bar. The design elements include an entrance plaza, a playground, dining and sitting areas, and an amphitheater. I chose to work with the steepest part of the site and build the amphitheater into the topography. It is a large gathering space covered with a drought-tolerant lawn with concrete benches that also serve as retaining walls. This flexible space is easily adaptable to different needs and events. To address stormwater runoff, I incorporated a bio-swell with a detention pond. It connects to Zaca Creek watershed and promotes education of local ecology. The site also incorporates Californian native vegetation and many trees that provide shade. For traffic calming solution, I increased the width of the median by ten feet on the east and left sides, and by fifteen on the north and south ends. This park is designed to bring people together no matter the differences. The flag will continue to wave in the wind, but we are the ones who assign and refine its meaning. Otherwise, what is a flag if not just a colorful piece of fabric?
I thought that one was good.
Okay, thank you. Since I, you don't want to hear me talk every time or say everything at the first, I'm looking at this, the, the board, and there's a lot of trees on here, so I'm wondering if Commissioner Blockdike wants to lead off on this discussion.
I would just like to say, I, there's a lot of things I liked about this particular design, obviously a lot of trees and a lot of sitting spaces and, I think the only thing, minor things probably, is, is I just don't see having a playground in the middle of our, in the middle of the Avenue of the Flags there. So if, if possible, not having play equipment, to me, it looks like an attractive nuisance and maybe a problem, you know, with, with kids running across the road to it and without their parents, so.
That's a good point.
Other than that, I'd like somebody else to go and say what they think about it.
Okay.
It's very-
Marcelo, do you want to go next?
Unmute, there we go. Yeah, I really like that design. It's, it's an awful lot of landscaping for, for such a small area, that, those mediums are not really that big, so I would omit the, the playground as well. And I like the water, but it uses up so much space. So, yeah, that's the only drawback I have. Other than that, she is really in tune with what we'd like to see there. Use up two mediums.
Great. Let's go with Commissioner Leggett, you want to go next?
Yes, hi. I'm really impressed with this, this design, you know, starting with the concept of, you know, the form of a flag. However, that might not be so noticeable as you walk through the space. Looking at it, it still would function, it looks like circulation and separation of spaces are looking nicely using that form. So I like that she used a concept that's more relevant to Buellton. I agree with the playground. Might not be the best programmatic element for this location, particularly in this design, it's smack in the middle of the design, which is really the centerpiece, which I don't think it, it should be. There could, there could be other strategies to create opportunities for children to play that aren't play structures, not a typical playground. You could reimagine, you know, more interactive sculptures or some sort of fun elements for kids to interact with rather than a typical playground. I agree that the, the detention pond is very large, probably way too large for this space to handle. It can handle more than enough water that we'd ever get, which takes up a lot of real estate. But I like the idea of controlling stormwater. And maybe, there could be a way that when there is no water, the space could also be used in a different manner, as a way to maximize usable space on this, in this median. But I, I really like the looks of the, the plan and the form and the, the rest of the programmatic elements.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Heady?
I agree with everything about the, the playground. You know, it's, it isn't right in the middle of it. We have, you know, we have a park which has a playground, we have a park behind Tractor Supply that has a playground, I don't think we need another one. My first looked at it, it's one of my, my favorite of the, it's simple, but it has some flow to it.
Nice.
The detention pond, I think it will legally be a attractive nuisance. If it fills up and some kid wanders in, or else you're gonna be, forget which way, we'll have to have these four or five-foot fence. So perhaps there's a way, like Aaron said, it's, it's a huge one, and I certainly wouldn't want that to be a focal point, that here we have a five-foot fence running the length of it, and a legal issue there, so.
Right.
Hopefully there's another way they can, when it does rain here, they can get the rain and send it someplace, but that's a huge, I'd be ridiculous. But other than that, I like the trees, like the amphitheater, the bathroom, and she did a lot, this, I think, is the sheet. Did a lot of work on this, so I appreciate her effort. That's, that's mine.
Okay, thank you. I'm pretty much, we're all on the same page here. I really like the, the overall concept of the wave of the flag in the design of the median. I also like that larger amphitheater at the end. I like the two kind of smallish buildings, you know, the small visitor's center, and then kind of over on the other side, the restrooms are kind of screened by trees and kind of out of the way and stuff. I think we're all on the same page, and I was gonna put this in my summary comments, but I, I'm in agreement on, with everybody about the playground, and especially Dan, it's like we have three really nice parks with really nice playgrounds, and even though we want this as a civic center and pedestrian-friendly and family-friendly and stuff, I don't think we want playground structures in here. Also, the pond, and I'm kind of thinking along those lines with, with some of the other projects we're gonna look at, water features, it's, you know, some of them will have dancing fountains and interactive fountains and stuff, and I just don't think that's really gonna work in the median in Buellton with all the wind we have. And, and then with ponds, like you guys mentioned, you know, there probably are gonna be liability issues, so. But overall, that also was one of my favorites, because just the overall concept and just very well-designed, so just, you know, a couple of little tweaks on that one. Does the, do the professors have any comments on that?
No, thank you so much for the feedback there. I think Tanya worked really, really hard on this, well, all of the students did, so it's great to hear that you're able to see the positives within the work, and we would expect that in all of them, that there's something that needs to be addressed, and yeah. But I thought that she really was able to capture that, the art deco in a different way. We talked about that quite heavily, that if you look at art deco, in many instances, there is a lot of organic forms within it, but those organic forms are framed, and she used with geometry, and she was using the flags along the perimeter there to create that, that, that geometric frame, the organic. So referencing art deco thinking, not necessarily quite in the literal sense of the word, so, but thank you.
Thank you. I think with that, we'll go to, let's see, I think it's called the Community Space for Buellton, number three, Andrea?
Ready.
Hi, everyone, my name is Hannah Weinstein, and for my design of median three, I decided to create multiple mixed-use spaces that focus on community to create a space that brings the city of Buellton, California, together. Much of my design is influenced by the wants of the Buellton city planners, including placing an amphitheater and plaza at opposite ends of the median. On the south end of the median is a multi-use plaza. There are some permanent seating structures in the shape of gears to celebrate the city's reputation as a service town. These are covered by shade sails and are near trees to provide even more shade. The plaza is intended to be a central gathering space as well as an area for farmers' markets and other events. In the center of my design for the median is a designated space for flags, which is adjacent to a picnic seating area and an interactive fountain. Paving used in my design is made up of permeable pavers, staggered edges to invite people to step off the main path and interact with the different elements of the space. I really wanted to include spaces for local vendors within the median and included spots for two kiosks as well as food trucks. The kiosks are based off ones I've seen in Bridgeport Village, Oregon. This area is inspired by the design theory of priming as a site and center of food will welcome visitors. These kiosks can also sell concessions for events that take place in the nearby mixed-use performance area on the north end of the median, events such as graduation ceremonies, movies, concerts, and more. Overall, I wanted the median to have multiple spaces that are open and can be transformed for a variety of uses. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Let's see, let's, number three, Marcelo, do you want to lead the discussion on this one?
Sure, I, I like her design as well. The, I like the fountain idea, the, that was the, the fountains that she used, was a lot of them, but I, I hate to, well, I don't care if you throw it in there or not. The city of Long Po has fountains and, of their plaza, and it's just, just three router, three water spouts, and during the summer when it's hot, kids can run in and out of the water and, and it's no big deal. When it cools off or, or, and whatnot, they just turn them off, so they're not running twenty-four hours. I like the idea of the kiosks, and the other thing that really caught my eye was the food, food truck parking. That has become a, a really big deal around the nation to have different cuisines from these trucks that are excellent. So that's another great idea that she, she picked up on. And, and being lean-like, the way she set it up, very simplified, makes it so much easier to convert from a farmer's market to different, different elements or whatever you want to call it, events. So that's my, my take on it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let's see, Aaron. Commissioner Leggett, how about you go next?
Yes, thank you. I think the program she developed is great. Lot of flexible space of various materiality, you know, the grass, the permaal paving, and the plaza, and the stage. One thing I wonder, and it's not just for hers and maybe the previous one as well, is the amphitheater space, if it's been thought about how many people that could actually see, sit? In this case, it looks like maybe that space could wrap around and be twice the size. Now might be an opportunity to really hold larger events there. I, I can't tell by looking at it, but I'm curious what that carrying capacity might be and what would be most appropriate. I like the way she thought of permaal paving, that's a great strategy, and how that- That's a great strategy and how that path is not linear. I mean, it's linear, but the edges are not linear, which makes it fun and interesting. But yeah, thank you. Overall, great job.
Okay, great. Uh, Dan, Commissioner Heady, you're up next.
Yeah, um, not a great fan of the, uh, water fountain. You know, if, if, if it was that size, that's a pretty big, big area, maybe a smaller if we really do want it. Uh, with the food truck space is great, but I can't see that there's any tables and chairs. So you order food and you're gonna, so I think if we incorporate that and say it's gonna be our food, our food truck space, and the design would have to have chairs and tables and then more trees. Uh, I mean, I can count, uh, there's probably less than a few dozen trees here for the other ones. So, I mean, if you are eating, you need to be under one of these trees during the summer time, so. Um, yeah, I, there's some good things about it, but, uh, it's, yeah, the, the flags, I don't know if we need nine flags. You know, uh, that, that, that's, that's not something for me. Uh, I would say more trees and, uh, and tables and chairs.
Okay. Is that it? Oh, yep, you're muted. Okay, um, Bob.
All right, um, I don't have much to add that you haven't brought up already. I, I read the letter from, uh, Peggy Brierton as well and totally agreed with, uh, pretty much agreed with everything she wrote in her letter. If, I think you all have read that too.
I'll, I'll read it into the record here in a little bit.
Okay, and, um, but you know, for, for me, some of, some of the aspects of this can be incorporated with the aspects of the patriotic wave that we all liked. And, um, and so far for me, it, it would be some kind of a hybrid. But anyway, that's, that's all I have to say. I think this, I think Hannah Weinstein did a really nice job here. But, but for me, the water aspect doesn't have to be there. I think it's a lot of maintenance for the city of Buellton to do the water, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's gonna be a huge expense over a long period of time, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so again, uh, we're pretty much all on the same page. I don't think anyone mentioned, I do like at the, I guess it's the, kind of the entrance on the south side, the shade sails. I kind of like the idea of, uh, providing not only with trees, but with those, um, those sails that are shade. Um, and you know, you can probably kind of work some art deco design into those too. Um, I like the trees. Um, I too with Marcelo, uh, like how she, where, how and where she put the truck, the food truck space. And you know, right in there with the, right next to the picnic tables, and so that's a good functional thing. I also like the amphitheater and, um, like Commissioner Liggett said, maybe if it's a little bit bigger, that's even better. For, you know, concerts in the park, that kind of thing, um. Uh, that's, uh, the only thing, um, again, really, from what I can tell, really almost no art deco in the design, so I'd like to see a little bit of that come into play. Um, other than that, um, good job on that one. Uh, professors, you wanna add anything?
I think I will just add, um, not, not add, but, um, highlight the idea that Erin was talking about. Hannah was very interested in creating a flexible space. Uh, part of her idea of having the interactive fountain was that it can be turned off at times and that space could be used for farmers market or extend, um, some of the, um, the area for tables and chairs. She also incorporated, and probably is not, um, clearly represented the jagged edge, uh, or that irregular edge that she has between the vegetation and the paths. It's supposed to be a faded edge. It's not a defined edge, but she wanted to create a space that is not, uh, um, that wouldn't be an inside or an outside, but that it will flow depending on the type of events. For farmers market, of the, um, any, any exhibitions, the food truck space. So she was very much interested in creating a flexible space.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Andrea, let's go to number four, the daily grind.
Thought I'd be home at seven thirty.
I'm an architecture student at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, and I designed the daily grind. The daily grind is a conceptual design for a new park located in downtown Buellton, California that commemorates and enhances the Avenue of Flags. The purpose of this project is to support the transformation of the downtown into a vibrant pedestrian friendly main street that honors veterans, engages local community, and encourages visitors to learn more about Buellton. The overarching goal of the project is to provide something for everyone by specifically creating multifunctional spaces such as the main green historic walk, event center, garden, kids world, family area and plaza that is located on site and designed for all users. By way of quick background, the Avenue of the Flags is a historical site which comprises eight iconic American flags that were dedicated by Ronald Reagan in support of the Vietnam War and is held dear to the citizens of Buellton. Buellton's roots lie in agriculture, car culture, and patriotism. This new design and redevelopment project are intended to assist the city of Buellton in creating a new identity, showcasing its past and present while creating a charming and unique art deco aesthetic to welcome the future. At the forefront of my design thinking are the needs of people. It is imperative that the design caters to all demographics, and that is why the spaces on site are multifunctional and have so much variety. Visitors to the daily grind can intuitively navigate through the median with its rhythmic flow. As you enter on foot from Second Street, you are captivated by the immense event center that is ready to host any city event. Once you pass the building's arch, you enter the park realm, where you can escape into a green safe haven. As you breach two curvilinear walls, you enter the fog plaza, which pays tribute to Buellton's roots and patriotism while reinforcing the scenic views of the local community. It is a place to pick your own adventure so that each user can have their own unique experience. Thank you for your support of this important project.
Again, thank you. Um, Commissioner Liggett, do you wanna lead us on this one?
Yeah, sure. Um, I think very thoughtful design. I think.
I'm a landscape architecture student at Cal Poly.
Oops, okay. Uh, I think the form is very interesting, um, very pleasant. And it's something that could be incorporated, that curvilinear, not just the paths, but how the spaces blend together with that form. I, I know, I know she said the concept is, you know, community and providing a space for everybody. However, in a, a median that's this small, and it is pretty small, I think she tried to impact many things in there. Rec area, play area, uh, maybe some of those could be combined into, into one space or just not at all. So I think really fine tuning a program that's not trying too hard to, uh, try, cater to every single person might be more appropriate for the space. But overall, I think she did a great job. I like how, also for stormwater management, rather than having one giant retention, detention pond, she has a lot of smaller ones scattered throughout the space, so it's not so overwhelming. Like, like the, a previous one we've seen. So yes, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Blocktai, wanna go next?
All right, here we go. Um, I, I think it's beautiful. You can see all the thoughtful work they put into it, um, he put into it. What I, but I, I wish there was more, um, community gathering space. I think, I think it needs that. And I, I think, don't think it's very flexible. It, it does remind you a lot of the other median where we have our statues in.
Right.
And it flows well from that, but, but this needs to have a different purpose. We do have the event center in there. I'm seeing that, the plaza, there's also the flag plaza at the other end. But I still see it as more of a meandering pathway than a, um, than an area where we can truly gather.
Right, okay. Is that it?
That's it?
Commissioner Heady?
Um, I, I agree with what Erin said, that, you know, trying to have, have something for everybody in, in a small space just doesn't work for me. I think you're trying to back too much into, uh, that area, uh, kids world, a fitness place. Uh, we could lose some of that and others have said, it make it more general space. Visitor center in the plaza, I, I don't see an amphitheater in it, maybe I'm missing that. Uh, the meandering of, of the, uh, path, I like that. You know, it's, it's nonlinear on that, that way, but just too much packed into it. I don't think you can, uh, please everyone. So, uh, yeah, um, maybe a couple, I'm not sure what elements I can take out of this app, uh, that we can bring on. I, I think you're found in other ones.
Okay. And Commissioner Sarkia?
Yeah, uh, this is a great presentation. She really covered all the bases. And again, uh, like I said, uh, um, in one of the other, uh, presentations is, is, it needs more than one medium. She's got so many cool things here that, uh, it would be, uh, better used for two or three, three mediums. And she also did, uh, did fountains.
Right.
Also wanted to add that the, um, the event center or the amphitheater, we don't have a real big one down at the River Park either, but it's, it seems to, to work for, for classes and, and whatnot, so. If you have it turned around, well, the people throughout the park could get, could hear the music and whatnot. Maybe they couldn't see everybody on stage, but the sound would, the sound could cover the, the whole area rather than be, uh, oh, maybe it is okay that way. But the stage facing the whole medium is, is what I was getting at. And it looks like it's really already that way. So that's all I had to add. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, um, last, uh, really, pretty much the same. Um, I do wanna say, I really like, um, in the key, kind of down below on the board, or even kind of further below in one of the, um, side views. Of course, I love the art deco design on the visitor center. Overall, I'm pretty much in agreement with everyone. I think that first, that whole section in the, um, south side, the plaza, the building, the amphitheater, that could even, you know, take up half of the median. And then, you know, we lose the fitness center and the kids world. And instead of so much, I mean, like, there's the white flower garden and the yellow flower garden. And, you know, maybe we lose some of those flower gardens for just more flex space or open space or, you know, just, you know, not, not so much stuff in there. But again, kind of make that, uh, civic plaza area bigger and, uh, take out some of those other functions that, um, we're not in agreement with, uh, you know, the kids world, the fitness, uh, water feature. I mean, that one's not so big. And that's pretty much it for me. So, uh, professors, you wanna add anything on the daily grind?
I'll just briefly add that, um, Hannah was, um, she did her design in a very methodic way. And, um, she, she, she was, um, I would say obsessed with the details. She, uh, in one of the reviews, she came with a planting, um, list, a list of about sixty or seventy different plant species that she wanted to bring to give every room its own character. And you can see, um, some of the examples here, which is not something that was, um, specifically required for this level of, of, uh, of deliverables for the studio. But, um, she, she was very, very interested in give each room, each, each of those spaces an identity. So she, she, that's why she, um, the reason why she presented or gave those options to, uh, give character, give color to, um, to all of them. So, um, and, and, and you can also see some of the details in the examples, the, the, um, the photograph that she includes in her board, all those examples, how she was, she was very much attuned into, uh, defining or detailing everything to the, to the, um, to the maximum.
Great, thank you. Um, I guess, uh, Andrea, let's go on to number five, the civic junction.
Hi, my name is Miriam Abutabek, and this project concludes my second year of landscape architecture at Cal Poly. The city of Buellton intends to design a new downtown core on a traffic median on the Avenue of the Flags roadway. Buellton is located in the crossroads of Highway one oh one and two forty six and is nicknamed Service Town USA because it is an ideal location for automobile repair and maintenance. This created a rampant car culture in Buellton with many seasonal car shows. The Avenue of the Flags is the historical original location of Highway one oh one. Eight American flags line the roadway and there is a plaque dedicated by Ronald Reagan and two patriotic memorials on the fourth median. Median three, or the civic junction, is located directly north of median four. This design of the median aims to bring Buellton's community together in a way that embraces the comforts of the past. The design is very straightforward and leaves no room for confusion on how to act in the space, creating a sense of familiarity. A clear axial line bisects the space with a large central plaza in the middle of the site. The repeated diamond paving pattern derives inspiration from hood ornaments, creating a new emblem for Buellton that alludes to the city's car culture in an art deco style that is unique to the area. The Rufus T. Mule Civic Plaza incorporates play for both adults and children alike through a series of bench swings and interactive water features surrounding the historic flagpole. The paving pattern surrounding the plaza is colored red and white to complement the flag's colors. Movable furniture is placed throughout the space, allowing it to be flexible for potential car shows and farmers markets. South of the civic plaza is the Zaca Recreation Area, which has a large grassy lawn and a seating area overlooking Zaca Pond. The north end features a quest of flex space. Here you can find a visitor center with information on upcoming and current events, another flexible seating area with an art gallery celebrating Buellton's local artists, and an amphitheater with stair-style seating.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Heady, do you wanna lead us on this?
Uh, sure. Um, a-again, with the water feature, uh, you know, it'd be nice, but I, I think it's, uh, an attractive nuisance again. I, I can just see kids wandering in it and, and using that. I, I like the, uh, open space next to it. Um, I'm not sure of the design. I know, you know, saying it's bi, uh, bisects the, the property. To me, it's, it's very rigid. There, yeah, I, I like their meandering paths better than that. Some things I did like. You know, I, I, I do like they had in her, what is it called, the Zaca Recreation Area, the seating above so that you can watch. I, I like that. But I don't know, I, I think your, this one's a little too rigid for me. I think the thing I did out of it is, you know, maybe some of the higher elevation seating, uh, but yeah, it's not my cousin.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Marcelo, you wanna go next? Vice Chair Sarkia, are you on?
You're on mute.
There.
There we go.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Why would he said every, no. Uh, I, I agree with the, uh, Commissioner Heady that I, I don't care for the straight lines either. I like the wandering paths. We can do without the, the, uh, the water. And I agree with Peggy in that, uh, we really don't need, uh, to put in, uh, those swinging benches. Of course, I wanna do that in my own yard though. uh, those swinging benches. Of course, I want to do that in my own yard, though. And that's all I had to say.
Okay. Commissioner Blackby.
Um, I, uh, agree with, um, so far with Commissioner Sarkia and Commissioner Heady about everything. It it really is, and it really isn't my cup of tea. It's a little bit too linear for me as well.
Okay.
But I think the unifying theme is, uh, where we want to probably eliminate play equipment and water from the designs.
Yeah.
Anyway, next.
Okay, great. Commissioner Leggett.
Well, I think it's probably one of my favorite concepts, uh, the car, creating our own one with this, this hood ornament. That's really powerful, and that could be, that really could be reinforced more in this, in this concept, maybe scattered throughout the space. Um, you know, an artistic, uh, expression. Um, or it could be implemented into kind of some other forms as well. Um, it is very linear. I I do like all the seating. I think it's very thoughtful, uh, providing ample seating, the idea of flexible seating so the city can move around the benches so they could create different forms or more open up the space. However, here it looks like there's three distinct spaces that are actually separated by buildings. So, yeah, you could have multiple events going on at once, but you can't really have one large event because they're so separated. Um, so there was a strategy that kind of bridged that connection so there are not three hard edges, totally distinct spaces.
Yeah.
Might be an interesting approach, but you know, between this and the other concepts we've seen, I I think we could take a little bit of everything and sprinkle them together, and everything's there. I mean, I don't think we're missing anything. So I'm really proud of these students. I think they did a great job. Thank you, faculty members, for guiding them.
Thank you. Uh, I totally agree. Um, and we're just an agreeable bunch tonight. We're kind of agreeing on all the same concepts and everything. Um, I like that north side, the quest of flex space with everything in there, but, uh, I agree that it does kind of look like three separate spaces. So maybe when you look at that visitor center, and I think it's the restrooms on the other side, you know, ma- maybe they can be tucked off to the side a little bit more so it does flow through better. Um, and again, you know, I think we all like the meandering path a little bit more. Um, yeah, the, I disagree with the pond feature. I, that's something I think we're, we don't want in here. And, um, let's see. And of course, you know, I would like a little more art deco thrown in there in the design elements. And I can talk a little bit more about that later in a general sense, but that's, that's about it on that one. I think we all agree. And I do like the comment on kind of like, you know, there's, there's concepts and key elements to each plan that's been presented tonight that is kind of like, oh, if we could just, okay, mix that all together and and take one from here and one from there, and we've got a good plan. Um, professors, do you want to add anything to, to that, the Civic Junction presentation?
Sure, just a couple of points. Um, the number one activity on a playground that the children love is a swing, and that's an activity that goes all the way into our older years. And so that idea there, uh, was, you know, to create or embrace the idea of the front porch, that as a community, we come together, hang out on our front porch, those front porch swings. And so that was really a strong impetus there for that, that central courtyard space, um, in the center of the design. And she really was, um, going after a very comfortable design. That's why the, the very strong linear there to make that transition between Median two and Median four, uh, coming through that space and the, and staying with very comfortable type imagery that you would typically see. And and so that was what was driving, um, uh, the design thinking there with, with her work. So, but swings are important. Yeah. Can, can go wrong.
That's why Marcelo wants one. Um, let's see, I'm just going to, uh, off to the side, Claire, have any other uh, public comments, questions, or anything come in during our meeting?
None have been received.
You're not, you're, you're muted. Sorry.
No.
No, okay, great. Okay, so in this section, um, e- even though it's not a public hearing, uh, you know, uh, if we were live, uh, in council chambers, we would, uh, take, uh, the speaker slips from the public. And so we have two, um, uh, speaker slips that have come in on email, so I'm going to read them right now and make sure everyone can hear me. Yes, okay, cool. Okay, so the first one is from Ms. Peggy Brierton. Chair Hamel and Commissioners, I found elements in several of the designs presented by Cal Poly students really interesting. That said, my favorite conceptual design overall is Journey Through the Timeline created by Lulu Tweetmeyer. And just to, um, for the audience, um, that is on, uh, that is not in one of the five that we have reviewed, but it's in the next section where, um, where the planning staff decided that, you know, there's seven other videos that have um, certain elements that are good design elements. So, um, so when this packet went out, uh, people were encouraged to review all of these. So this is that one she's talking about, Journey Through the Timeline created by Lulu Tweetmeyer. It checks most boxes with a few changes and some clarifications that would come with future drawings. I see this design offering Buellton an opportunity to have something uniquely our own, as Ms. Wagner puts it, oh, Ms. Tweetmeyer puts it so well. A truly memorable and must-stop-and-see place as well as a usable and fun community gathering space. It is ver- it is vitally important that quality materials, including art elements, are used throughout this median. What I parti- particularly like about Journey Through the Timeline and my personal comments are, number one, overall design. The proposal is creative, uniquely special, gives us the spaces we ask for, and connects to our history. It gives a thoughtful nod to art deco in a creative and modern way. This functional art design median will attract tourism on its own merits. The time tunnel serves both as an interactive sculpture and showcases Buellton's history in a fun and unexpected way. I'm assuming this is not the final version of this element, realizing further development of the concept will be done if this is the chosen design. I can see articles written in Sunset and AAA magazines recommending Buellton's median as a must-see on a road trip up Highway one oh one. Number two, kinetic sculptures. I want to understand more clearly where the placement of kinetic sculptures would be, better visual images of these proposed sculptures, and how many are proposed. Sometimes less can be more. Food truck stop locations, placement of amphitheater with murals behind, two bathroom locations. I like the two bathroom facilities because of the activities that are proposed for this median. Catch basin, if, only if the catch basin is a usable space when it's not capturing rainwater. I think somebody mentioned that earlier on another of the presentations. Recommended changes to Journey Through the Timeline proposal, the pond, I believe the community would be better served with a plaza in this area instead. Playground, instead of a playground, I recommend a sculpture garden that's child, that children can interact with, e.g., play elements that relate to Buellton's history. Suggestions to enhance the Journey Through the Timeline proposal based on other design concepts submitted. Widen the median, e.g., uh, Tonya Moss in patriotic way. Use kiosks as visitors' information center, e.g., Hannah Weinstein, uh, Avenue of the Flags. What I am strongly not in favor from other design proposals, interactive water features, swinging benches, play parks with slides, swings, et cetera, dog park, outside exercise equipment area. Respectfully, Peggy Brierton. Um, does any want to, what do you want to add? I mean, that her ge- her general information is pretty spot on with everything we've discussed tonight. Um, uh, we did not discuss that, that project during through timeline. Um, did any of the, did any of the other commissioners want to add anything? Did they review it? Do you want to talk about that?
Well, what I did take from Peggy's letter was, and it was shown on the last, um, like we had number five, was the two bathrooms. And I think maybe that deserves some discussion. It makes a great point that, you know, you have two different activities. It's a long way to go if you need to go to the bathroom and you're a parent with your little kids.
Right.
So I would be in favor of it in one and each end.
Okay, that's a good idea.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, I think this is a very thoughtful letter and comment. Very, and uh, she's got some interesting ideas, um, which I think we've all echoed here at, uh, in this meeting. One thing, we're not, which I liked about the design was the kinetic score. Uh, when I watched your presentation, I thought that was very creative. Um, understanding that Buellton is very windy. And it's, you know, rather than make it a deterrent or look down upon it, you know, make it, embrace it, and have something special happens when it does, uh, blow wind. So I think the idea of that would be maybe it lights up or it moves.
Oh, yeah.
Help celebrate the wind, um, as an opportunity to do that, to create iconic space. Um, so I really like that design element, and I think that could be implemented.
Okay. Anyone else on those? Otherwise, I'll go on to the next comments. I see nothing. Okay, um, this is another letter, email, um, from Kathy Buellton, Executive Director of the Buellton Chamber of Commerce. Uh, thank you for sharing the design. This is to, uh, to the Planning Department. Thank you for sharing the design concepts for the Avenue of Flags. There were many great ideas, and the students really took their time to work with the goals and objectives set forth. After looking at them, there were various elements that we liked. Rather than go over each concept or top five, we're just giving some of our thoughts, suggestions, and opinions about some of the elements the students presented. Things we liked, the patriotic theme and our features to tie into the name of the avenue. Wind features, as it does get windy here, this could be our, an art deco installation possibly. Art deco tree grates, a wow, quote unquote, wow factor, such as the tunnel or the Buellton letters. These all offer a photo op and are a draw to the space. Art deco flag feature in one of the presentations. Amphitheater, restrooms, visitor center, Buellton history elements are a way to tell our story, naming a section after the Buell pit, the Buell family perhaps, like Buell Plaza, Buell Theater, or question, question. Things we didn't like, although water features are fun, we didn't think they belong on the avenue and could possibly be a liability for the city. Also expensive to keep up. And also no, no fruit trees or high maintenance landscaping, again, maintenance reasons. Things or thoughts, things or thoughts of concern. Is the tunnel safe or does it invite crime or graffiti? The out-of-the-box idea from C N Amor with the paint on the road is really bright and fun. Would this fade crap confuse the drivers? Just some things to think about, but very different from the rest of the valley. Would like to see more art deco elements or design use to really embrace that theme for the avenue. Also with any of the development, is it too costly to build? Is it difficult to maintain or sustain? Is it a liability for the city? Overall, this median really lends itself to the wow factor for the specific plan. We need to look at what the needs are, such as restrooms, amphitheater, visitor center, et cetera, and then look at remaining things and see what would best suit the community and visitors, and what else would be the draw to bring people here. The tunnel is pretty interesting and would definitely be a draw. Incorporate art deco where you can to embrace that theme for the avenue. Be a starter so future developers know the city is trying to incorporate these concepts in their projects as well. I'm excited to see how this goes. Thanks again for including, uh, including us. And that's Kathy Reeland from the Buellton Chamber of Commerce. I, I think she pretty much hit on all of our questions and comments and concerns throughout the evening. Anyone else want to say anything? Nope. Okay, we're all in agreement. Yay. Um, I think that pretty much concludes. Do, do, um, does any, do any of the commissioners have questions? I guess, general questions for the professors while they're still here with us.
I have a question.
Yes.
Again, thank you for your, I know how much work it is to wrangle a bunch of students to put together thoughtful projects, and every single one was very creative, unique, and um, you should be proud. If you were to revisit this, what would be the next steps if you were to ask to re, you know, build upon this project? Um, how would you envision the next steps? Would it be any different? That's my question.
Um, I, well, because we're, you know, it is, it is a class, and so there's academic outcomes that need to be met with the class through the project. And so, um, so both Cesar and I were balancing the needs of Buellton with the needs of what those learning outcomes that needed to be achieved with the students. And I think that moving forward, probably with the information that's been provided, you know, we would probably lead them in more specific, um, detailing about the projects and design thinking. So what can those spaces be? The big thing that we were really, that we, that we talked extensively about was that what happens to that amphitheater space when there's not a performance going on? And in this day and age with tax dollars being tight, you've got to make sure that every space counts, every space is active, every space is being used or is usable a hundred percent of the time. So how do you design those spaces so that on the occasion that there's a performance, that it works as an amphitheater? But how does that space function when it's not an amphitheater? Is it just a dull space that nobody's going to go and and be a part of, or is it an active space that contributes to the rest of the needs of, um, uh, programming needs for, uh, the median and the Avenue of the Flags? So those were critical things, and I think that we would then, obviously, with the strong, the, the reason that you saw the playgrounds was because there was talk about all of the new housing that was going to come into place, and there's not a green space nearby. And so some of the students chose to look at this not as much as a civic plaza, but as a neighborhood park. And to be able to address those three hundred some odd families that you're anticipating in the future moving into that space, that they would have a green space to be able to function in. So, so we'd probably provide more, uh, forceful direction, um, that would be more clearly in line with, with what Buellton's looking for. And then hopefully being able to produce, um, you know, more concise documents for planting plants, materials, um, and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Thank, just, just to add to that, I think we'll, we will definitely take on board the comments. There was a lot of comments about, um, water, not using water or water being a liability. And, uh, students, they were very excited. Most of the project, and probably all of them include some type of water feature in it, and we know is, um, we need to be a bit more, um, um, make sure that we have enough water for the future and we don't waste it. And, um, but it, it, this is one of the, this is the, the third design studio. They're a second year class, so, um, I, I think we just try to promote ideas. But the advantage of this, this being a real project is that there's a real client, there's real feedback, there's real needs. It's not the studios, uh, or what David and I will set up, is what you, what the residents, what the planning commission, what, um, you guys set up for, um, how, how to make it successful. So it, the, it, the, the students were very, very excited when the project is real, when the project can be built, when the project has a real client. It's not a fictitious project that we set up, but it's a real one. There's a chance of, well, we didn't get the chance to go there, but there's a chance of the project being built there in, in, in reality. So that, that's something that we're really thankful for, and we will definitely, if we were to follow up on this or to answer, um, Aaron's question, take that in a more, like, push that to a different level, given the feedback that, uh, was offered today.
Okay, great. Great. Uh, okay, I'm gonna, uh, turn it over again to the commissioners to, um, maybe just summarize, you know, what are your bullet points? You know, what are your bullet points and comments? So I will start, if we were in chambers, I will start at the end of my right, Commissioner Hady. Do you have any final?
No, I think that my favorite was number two. I think the design elements from the other ones I would incorporate would be maybe a food truck. Area, I'd like the two restrooms. I like to keep a path a little bit meandering, maybe not as crooked as the one was, it was pretty meandering. But all in all, my favorite was number two. If you're going to have seating places, make sure you have trees because it is, it is summer and. Maybe something that does celebrate and really needs some more detail which would come out of the style of the, the art deco style. That would be my comment.
Okay, great. Vice Chair Sarkia, do you have anything to add or summarize?
Yeah, I, I can take away from this, these designs. The swinging bench and I also noted that the amphitheaters. It would be a good idea to, I don't care about so much the size of them, but that they, that they would get shade. So that when there are not being a, a performance there, that you could go there and just have a picnic or, or, or share your lunch with somebody. But with, without shade, it's kind of like, oh, too hot out here.
Right.
Other than that, these were great designs and we're really fortunate to, to have this, this class come our way. I really appreciate it.
Yes.
From the professors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Blockdike, you would be next down the row?
Hard to add too much more to the, to the comments from Commissioner Sarkia and Commissioner Hady. I do like the patriotic wave the best. Yeah, I also like the fact that they widened the median. And I do see room there for possible putting a food truck. And, and including some of the elements that we saw in some of the other ones. And then it mentioned earlier was maybe having two restrooms, one on each end. I, that's probably a good idea. They don't have to both be open all the time, but when we have events, we would have that ability to have it open for sure. Yeah, yeah, anyway.
Okay, great.
I don't think I have too much more to add. I, I think we've covered a lot of ground here and, yeah, and I think we're in agreement on so many things. Eliminating active, you know, play areas, you know, with, with equipment. And eliminating water features, maybe making the bio, the detention bond pond smaller. I, I really can't, it doesn't look like to me that the detention bond is more than a foot or two deep. Am I wrong about that? I, I think that's all it is. And probably will, will suffice as, as open space. So, okay, that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Leggett, any final comments?
Just to reiterate that I think you could take a little bit from every single one of these projects, not just the ones we saw tonight. For example, I, I think that the, the flag concept has the best form. The circulation, the connection of spaces. I think the jazz, the idea of having something that's really colorful and then pops and brings attention. That could be implemented into that flag, maybe the color of the flag. The idea of food trucks from other concepts, I think is, could be very powerful. Flexible city seating, having lots of movable seating to be brought in. I, I think something for the making, but I, I agree. I think the form, kind of the base. Plan could be that, that patriotic wave that, that hits us from.
Great, thank you. Okay, for me, first and foremost, thank you again to the professors and the students. This is just super awesome. All the work and thought and just everything that went into it. We really appreciate this. Second of all, I really want to thank staff for going through everything and vetting everything and. You know, coming back to us with some of their top picks and some of the other design features we wanted to look at. That was very helpful. Thank you for your time on all of that. I'm just gonna, you know, it's, it's the same thing down the line through the whole commission. We're talking about the same thing all night, but just to summarize. I would like to, I, yeah, I, my favorites, I don't know that I could really pick one. I really did like number two. And I liked design elements from number four and five. Of course, I really liked the jazz and swing thing too. So, you know, if we can get more color in, that'd be cool. But again, since our specific plan, the, the overall or underwriting. Architecture feature is art deco, so I would like to see more of that. You know, obviously in the small buildings that are created on the median. Maybe some tree grates, you know, with that design in it, planters, seating, shading, you know, some of those sail shades. Again, I really, I liked, also liked, well, obviously number two, the patriotic, the flag themes. There were different flag themes in some of the other presentations that had cool design elements too. We want to make sure that the flex spaces are truly multipurpose so we can use them for a lot of different things. Good to keep the, have the visitor information or like a little history booth. Amphitheater and I like the concept. We came up with a good concept tonight with the two bathrooms, one on each end and. Like I think Bob just said, we don't have to use them both at the same time unless it's a grand event. And then of course, the, the negatives are the things we didn't really like is the water feature and. And I think, you know, I mean, I didn't, don't really want to offend the professors or anything, but I mean, to me. I'm saying no to the water feature just because we do have so much wind here. And it's just like, if you have fountains and the interactive features, that's just going to blow down the street. And then of course, no playground structures, that kind of thing. So overall, really awesome. And I also want to thank my fellow commissioners for, we really found through a lot of information tonight and we did a great job. So, and then so I think we'll, we'll stop there. We'll go on to the agenda. Written communications, it looks like there's none. Committee reports, I don't think so. Planning commissioner comments, does anybody have any other comments? About something else? No. Planning director report, are planning directors here?
Hello, I just wanted to mention a couple of things tonight. So at the last city council meeting, we received direction on an updated landscape rebate program. That we are now calling the Built in Beautiful Landscape Rebate Program or Program. And really this is just an updated version of what we have had in the past that residents have been able to participate in in the past. There's, we've expanded it, it's become a little more flexible. Added the number of dollar amount that you get per square foot, the total number of square feet that you would be eligible for. We've expanded the program to include both residents and businesses. So, you know, just as an FYI, we have updated the, the program and. If anybody is interested in participating or learning more about what the new program or the updated program is. Please feel free to press the planning department for more information. The application, the updated application is also up on the city's website or will be here shortly for people to do what they'd like. And secondly, kind of related to that is at the same city council meeting. The receipt or the, the, the green team, on behalf of the green team and the planning department. $2,500 have been allocated for a community cleanup. Program that is expected to occur this summer. So the, the goal here is. Two Saturdays in July and two Saturdays in August where we would have a day where. Community members could come out and assist with a cleanup effort, somewhere around the town. Of course, we would ensure that there was proper social distancing and, and those types of measures taking place. That program, we're currently sort of working through the details on dates and. Details of locations and things like that, but I will note that if anybody has any ideas for potential cleanup locations. Or anybody would like to volunteer or know anybody that may want to volunteer to please reach out to the planning department. And we'd be happy to speak with you and see if, if there's an opportunity to. For, for any assistance or any ideas that you might have on any locations. For that, that effort. Other than that, that's all I have.
Send us, send us an email on, on that green team update for cleanup.
Okay.
That's good news. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will adjourn the meeting at eight o'clock.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.